Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. I'd like to have Hassan Ibram lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
Counsel Chair, could we have a moment of silence?
Okay, at this moment, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Lieutenant Bruce Crott, who had 20 years with the police force. He passed from cancer this week. Thank you. At this time, Councilman Wenzel has something to say.
Thank you, Counsel Chair. As hard as you try to keep your personal life and your duties as an elected official separate, it's nearly impossible. Not a day goes by that any of us sitting up here out in the yard doing yard work, or at a shopping center, or at a ballgame, and a concerned resident or business owner approaches us with an issue that concerns them. We realize it's part of the job, and we're proud that thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of people voted for us. Out of the hundreds and hundreds of jobs in the city of Dearborn Heights, there's only 12 or so that are approved by the citizens of Dearborn Heights. Once again, it's an honor to serve the residents of Dearborn Heights and its business owners. And I'd like to share something with you. It'll take about a minute. This Thursday, July 11th, marks two years since the passing of our daughter Jamie. Jamie was a single parent. She died shortly after giving birth to her fifth child. My wife Debbie and I are now raising the five children, four girls and one boy. Nina, two. Kayden, three. Jenna, six. Paige, seven. And Kara, 10. It's a very daunting task, physically, especially emotionally and financially. Me and my wife and our five children are living on a $26,000 pension, plus the money I make as a city councilman. However, with the help of our family, our church, our friends, and most of our community, we have been able to make ends meet. For the past two years, two out of the five kids have been in diapers. And out of those two years, I can humbly say that we haven't spent a penny on diapers. Not a day goes by that we don't come home and there's an Amazon box or a Target bag with a packed case of diapers and some baby wipes. It's true what they say. It takes a village to raise a child. You turn on the news, and it seems like most of the stories are about bad people doing bad things. I just wanted to tell you there are a lot of good people doing a lot of great things. Our family can testify to that. There has been so many people and businesses that have helped our family. Some I see out in the audience today. And even we've had help from the city council members, and even the mayor has donated to our family. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to tell this story and say thanks to all those who have helped our family, and God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have the agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the agenda for the July 9, 2019 regular city council meeting be approved. Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Before we go further, I'm going to ask everybody to check their phones so they do not go off. Thank you. Okay. Do I hear any discussion? Okay, this is the agenda approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have approval of the minutes. This is the minutes from the regular meeting of June 25, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we approve the minutes from June 25, 2019 regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined in item 4A.
Second. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items only. That's items that are on today's agenda. We ask that you limit it to two minutes. Please come to the microphone, state your name, and where you live.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Amir Macklin. I'm an attorney. Our address is 23756 Michigan Avenue in the city of Dearborn. Madam Chair, I emailed earlier this evening a request for an extension of time. I don't know if you'd have the right to approve that extension at this point.
No, I didn't get it. But at this point, I don't, I'm not given extensions because I suspect we're going to have a lot of two-minute people here.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak. My comments today are in regards to agenda items number 8B and 9A, which are the ordinance involving H-1906, the smoking lounge ordinance. As I outlined in my last comments to the council two weeks ago, or last week, I believe, this is going to be an issue for the city of Dearborn Heights. The adoption of this ordinance is in violation of the Zoning Enabling Act. As an attorney representing somebody who's already had an approved building permit, and somebody who has had plans submitted to the city, this is going to desperately impact the city of Dearborn Heights and lead to litigation for the city of Dearborn Heights. This is something that will be challenged in court. Secondly, I anticipate that many members of the community are going to come out and speak against the client that I represent today. Most of these, well, considerably all of the comments are going to be without merit. And I challenge this council to do a hearing on this issue. If anybody is going to be using these comments to make a decision in their determination today, I'd like to have a hearing to challenge these people and to challenge the veracity of their statements and what they're going to say. This is not an ordinance, it should not be an ordinance perceived to stop or impede the ability of somebody to come in and open up new business in the city of Dearborn Heights. Rather, it should be particularly drafted towards what the citizens require, what restrictions are required in order for this governing body to do a job under the law. Clearly, there are some issues that are going to outright dismantle this ordinance. The Zoning Enable Act is one of them, and the mayor has outlined them.
You are at two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment in regards to our agenda items today? Your name and two minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Abbas Khalil. I live at 6754 Riverside Drive in Dearborn Heights. I'm the owner of the Lava Lounge. And I'm proud to say that I've been living in this beautiful city for over 25 years. I'm here today because I love this city. It's my home, and more importantly, it's my kids' home. I heard about this moratorium that passed six months ago, and I was very happy and in full support of it because I know the havoc it can create for a city if we have a bad actor that doesn't follow or respect the law, that has no consideration for residents, health and safety, and that will open all hours of the night, allows and encourages alcohol illegally into the lounge, underage drinking, and that's just to name a few. The hookah lounges we have in the city today run clean and lawfully. They do not in any way conflict with the health and safety of our community. Hookah lounges that adhere to the law are protected by this ordinance. Councilman Abdullah and Attorney Macklin, I don't appreciate you guys using Islam as a religion as an excuse for the misconduct by any smoking lounge. Councilman Abdullah, Islam has nothing to do with hookah lounges. You should know better than that. That's a misleading statement. This is a business. It has nothing to do with religion. No city in America will allow a business with such a horrible record and vast violations, except I believe this mayor. I sat here two weeks ago at the last council meeting, bewildered and shocked, watching our mayor with anger saying, I quote, "This is ridiculous. This is illegal." And if you see him, you think he's fighting for a good cause, a church, a charity, or something. But no, he was fighting for an ordinance that requires compliance and promotes health and safety for our city. Myself and others were also shocked to see last week, last meeting, Councilman Abdullah and Councilman Coniston taking advice and being coached by Attorney Macklin, who is the same attorney for Sky Lounge, right here, my own two eyes. And many people saw. Mr. Mayor, why are you fighting this hard for a business that has been Dearborn's nightmare, depleting all its resources by nonstop violations, illegal activity, fighting, open all over of the night, and disturbing the peace? I can go on and on. The state of Michigan has also cited him many times. He's one of their biggest burdens. A member of the Dearborn Heights Planning Commission informed me in was in awe that this was passed behind his back while he was on vacation. And it's a fire lane. And it's only 20 feet away from a gas pump. The fire hazard is enormous. Mr. Mayor, you're also making false accusations about the council and existing hookah lounge owners of things that only I think you're guilty of. None of us are stopping competition. Blue Moon opened, and I was their biggest supporter, and I'm friends with the rest of the hookah lounges.
Thank you. Your two minutes is up. Anyone else? Please step up to the microphone. You have two minutes. State your name.
Ma'am, my name is Deiruz Bazey. This is Hassan On. I'm going to speak on his behalf. He asked me to do so. Is that okay?
Sure, that's fine.
My name is Hassan On. I'm a Dearborn Heights business owner of Palma Bistro for four years with my brother Sam On. I found out that my brother was scamming Mr. Ayman Talib since September last year to take over my business without my knowledge. He sold him the business, and at the same time, and Ayman leased the building next to my restaurant with the plan to turn it into a hookah lounge. They waited for months. When I confronted them, both my brother and Ayman, they denied the scandal. When I got injured on the job in March and took off work for less than two weeks, I came back to work only to realize the locks were changed and the business was turned over to Ayman. The deal was sealed with the $300,000 cash money given to my brother by Ayman Talib with another buyer that came in and offered my brother. And that buyer was Mr. Abbas Khalil. He came and offered my brother and I $325,000. My brother said, "No." Why? Because he already made the deal with Ayman Talib. As we speak today, the restaurant has a sign of Sky Italian Bistro with my original logo that I paid for. Also illegal. Ayman claims that he took over a fully functional restaurant for free, half a million dollar business, for free. Does that sound right? No, of course not. What sounds right is that Ayman would have been given, would have bought my business cash under the table only if he was guaranteed by someone in the city that a hookah lounge license and a restaurant establishment will be given to him. The back and illegal deals given to Ayman were the reason he stole my business with full confidence. Furthermore, Mr. Talib began construction in the nearby building during the time where my moratorium that has taken effect. And I had many videos to prove that. I contacted the city multiple times since October of 2019 to ask about permits, new licenses, and to later complain about the construction and debris, wondering how is he even doing construction when the moratorium didn't even take effect? He stated he doesn't have a license, say even a permit. He was not stopped. He continued to do his construction. Until now. Until now, he's doing constructions, even though he's not abiding by the moratorium that needed 180 days to stay. Is Mr. Talib above the law? This is what we need to know. Who's responsible for approving his permits and the license without abiding by the moratorium or hiding his permits until the right time? In the last meeting, it was noted only by the mayor that he was aware, he is the only one that was aware of the new lounge opening up soon. It was almost a done deal and ready for business while the other council members had no clue that the business specifically, that the business was about to start, specifically in January, where the moratorium was passed.
Thank you. Your two minutes is up.
Ma'am, I have one more thing, if you don't mind. It's a message to the mayor, if you don't mind.
One or two sentences?
I promise you.
No more than two sentences.
Okay. Hold on one moment. I am asking the city of Dearborn Heights not to allow this hookah lounge to open up in here in Dearborn for many valid reasons, and that will not be beneficial to our city, our nearby businesses, or community. You will be bringing filth and trouble to the city. Again, I do not wish to include the city of Dearborn into many my current lawsuit and litigation. But I promise you, if the city
Thank you.
will not make the right decision, I will bring you guys into litigation. And you're the first one.
Ma'am, thank you. Please step to the microphone. Your name, and you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Pastelneck, and I live on Kenlock Street in Dearborn Heights. I've been here since 2004, and I love living in Dearborn Heights. However, it seems that with this hookah issue that's going on right now, we have an ordinance that states that we are allowed to have seven. Mr. Mayor, you claim in section 8B of your most recent notice on this that you have a motion to veto the ordinance because it improperly stifles competition for the benefit of existing businesses to the detriment of the city and its residents. The ordinance doesn't stifle any competition whatsoever, as you claim. It limits the number of that type of business that can be within the city limits. It doesn't prevent that type of business. It only limits how many. The increase in competition is not going to be beneficial to any existing lounge owners or to any residents of the community. Due to the limited funds that people here have to spend on that type of activity, it's not going to, he's not going to make any money doing that. All he's going to do is bring down the businesses that are already existing in the city. The less money they make, the less taxes they pay, the less they do for this community and the less they want to help people. You're not going to, that's not going to help anybody. Your claims that the ordinance appears to have arisen from corruption, and it will lead to further corruption in 8B, section 2, are also more of an opinion rather than facts, as you claim. The reason for the ordinance is obvious due to the size of the city and the need for other types of businesses and not more hookah lounges. Okay? We can have farmers markets. We can have, you know, other types of businesses. We don't have to have a hookah lounge.
Seven. Please point or...
Seven appears to be a reasonable number based on the number of people in Dearborn Heights. The state of Michigan currently has 275 smoking exemptions assigned. Of that number, only 150 are actually active. Dearborn Heights population is approximately 1% of the state of Michigan at this time. Based on a per capita data, which I got from the state of Michigan, we're at 60,000. That would equate to one hookah lounge for this city. One, we have seven. We have an ordinance that states all we need are seven. And you're telling someone that they can bring another one in because you say it improves our economy and it helps our community. I don't see anywhere where it's going to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Name and two minutes, please.
Zohair Abdulha, Dearborn Heights. Last city council, I brought some papers, and I said, "The ordinance, which is written, must benefit the community, must promote the safety of the community, must promote the businesses of the community. It's not done for one person or against one person or one group." The only thing you need to decide tonight is, is this hookah lounge fit in the place where it is going to open? Does it fit with the environment around it? Does it benefit the city and its residents? Does it improve the area and the economy in that area or not? Those are the things you need to decide on and nothing else, no matter who says yes or no or what happened. But I believe our safety. I believe our city deserves this city council to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Two minutes and state your name.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street. Hookah use is widespread and is increasing dramatically among adolescents. Countless studies show smoking tobacco through bubbled water does not keep the tobacco from being toxic. This is alarming due to the health risks of smoking hookah at early age. Both the American Cancer Society and the American Lung Association have called for stringent policies to limit hookah smoking. Many cities across the U.S. are banning or limiting hookah lounges. Even liberal cities like New York and San Francisco are against hookah smoking. In New York, the Health Department embarked on a public awareness campaign warning New York Norca's about health risks of smoking hookah. The city ads campaign warns that one hour of hookah use exposes the smoker to as much as carbon monoxide and tar as smoking 10 cigarettes. San Francisco voters banned all flavored tobacco sales last June, and the fall and full enforcement of that law began on January 1 of this year. Closer to home, the Dearborn City Council voted unanimously the number of smoking lounges to 15 and required that they get a state exemption to the 2010 smoking law that forbids smoking in places that sell food. So now that these hookah entrepreneurs are trying to flood Dearborn Heights with these hookah lounges because Dearborn has limited them, why should Dearborn Heights pick up the slack from Dearborn? The protection of our children is why Councilman Bazey wants hookah lounges limited, not because of any benefit to himself, as the mayor is accusing him of. These accusations stem from Councilman Bazey's research into city matters that are exposing some troubling issues. In face of all the damning evidence against hookah smoking in our children, one needs to question the motivation behind the promotion of unlimited growth of these hookah lounges in our city in addition to smearing the reputation and good name of Councilman Bazey by the pleco administration.
Thank you. Your two minutes is up. Your name, and you have two minutes. Lisa.
Hi. Apparently, you already know me. My name's Lisa Oshansky. I live on West Pleasant Ridge. I'm going to expand a little bit on what the previous speaker said, and I'm just going to bring it down to, really, it's not about the lawsuit. But, you know, really, bring it because look at the citizens here. We don't want you in this town. It's that simple. It doesn't matter if your Sky Lounge or ABC, it's one more than what the limit allows. We have limits on things like medical marijuana dispensaries based on the mileage and the customers and the distance. This is no different. Don't let him scare you. Beyond that, you know, I just, this particular one, I find very disturbing in that we have the administration saying, "Throw open the doors of Dearborn Heights. Come on over." Yet, it's the same as if you had someone in your subdivision who constantly has the police called on them, dozens and dozens of times, hundreds of pages of documentation for, you know, illegal acts, whether it's domestic violence or illegal drinking or underage things, fighting, gunfights, or guns going off. And yet, when the house next door to you comes open for sale, you run over to them and say, "Hey, you should rent this." You know, nobody in their right mind does that. Would anybody here? I think not. That is the reality. So there's only two reasons that the citizens can find for such an action, and that is personal gain or you're crazy. Take your choice. I don't really care. Take your choice, I don't really care, I don't have a horse in the race. But we don't want another hookah lounge.
Thank you. Any other comment? Name and you have two minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Najah and I live on Whitefield Street in Dearborn Heights. I think, put everything else aside, I have read a lot of reports regarding incidents that have happened in the city of Dearborn. I think, put all that aside, which that is extremely concerning to me, my parents live two blocks from this location, and that for me is a problem. My children are always there, so for me, bringing those problems to my home and where my kids are, that's, that's an issue for me. And it's an issue for my family, it's an issue for my siblings, and it's an issue for my parents. It's, it's right in our neighborhood. But put all that aside, I think what I'm finding to be the most concerning is that construction is still happening on this property even with all of this going on. Like, why are we continuing to work on a building where your citizens are concerned about it? It's not been approved, we have an issue where you guys are having to make a decision, how is construction continuing to happen? Why are they, just yesterday, tearing up the patio to put a patio in? Again, I don't know the business owner personally, I have nothing against him personally. My issues come from all of the reports that I've seen with my own two eyes, and I know we have copies of all those reports from the city of Dearborn. They did a FOIA, you know, they, we have a FOIA for all of, all of these, you know, these issues. And why would we want to bring that to our city? Why do we want to bring that to our home where my children live, where your children live? Why? If any other business had those types of issues and those, that many citations, we would not put up with, this room would be full with this many people to fight that business, just the same as we are today. So I'm really disappointed in seeing that work is, they're continuing to work on a building, that they technically don't have a license for a hookah lounge yet. The state of, there is no, there is no license for a hookah lounge. How are they continuing to dump money in a building that they don't have a license for that business? Unless they've been promised a business.
Name and you have two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Hassan Bazey, I live on Sheehan Highway, by the way. The question, the question is going to be asked here, why this particular business was shut down in Dearborn? And why is the landlord of this particular business refused to renew the lease even though they paid more money than they were paying before? We don't need this kind of business in our city. Please take this into consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Next, your name and you have two minutes, please.
My name is Ed Prollick, I live on Robin Dale Street. These, across the street on Warren, it was a Red Apple, I think a hookah lounge, okay? They would stay up until three, four o'clock, maybe five o'clock in the morning, drinking outside and everything else, and smoking the hookahs and everything else. And I called and complained and then something was done on that, okay, and that. The reason why I've come up here is this, I used to smoke camels, cigars, and tobacco and pipe and all that. I smoked for thirty-five years. I'm all against hookahs, I'll tell you why. I had three operations on this, my left leg, I had one operation on my right leg. I was in intensive care on my left leg for a day and a half because I had blood clots in there, and I was just had an operation, angioplasty, and again on my right leg. The hookahs in that, there's more tobacco that you're blowing out because I see it blowing from the hookahs, okay? And you're taking all that stuff in there, that's all doing is ruining your health. I, I'm all against it and, and stop all this hookah stuff here.
Thank you. Next, state your name and you have two minutes.
Gary Mayatke, Plainfield Street, obviously Corporation Counsel for the city. The mayor's veto was totally accurate with regard to all the legal aspects that were stated. If people oppose hookah lounges or smoking lounges of this sort, then they need to recognize the opinion that I gave, and the opinion that was reiterated, and the opinion that basically was bolstered by Mr. Roberts as well. This will violate the Zoning Enabling Act. We've already said that, and there are numerous other issues. So if this body wants to end up doing something about hookah or about smoking lounges, it needs to follow the law. That is a very important consideration, and if this body overrides the veto, we are going to have some very serious legal problems.
Thank you. Any other further, any more comment? Name and you have two minutes, please.
Good evening, my name is Jack McIntyre, Hazelton Street, interim director of the Building Department, doing my very best. What I want to make clear, first of all, is I don't really have an opinion one way or another about the hookah. I think we spent a lot of time, months back, asking for a lot of information when marijuana came to play, and I'm going to age myself for a second, this same location used to be a disco, and I, I, I used to go there, we smoked, we drank, and we, we were outside. It was near a gas station, but at that point, it was the, the police, that's their job to step in and, and to police those situations. I don't know the, the history, I'm a little offended that people are suggesting that there's some kind of corruption involved here. If anybody knows me, I'm the last corrupt person there is. I, I don't take even free iced teas when I go through the drive-through at Tim Hortons, even though they insist, I tell them, "Might be a policy for you, but it's not a policy for me, I'll buy my own iced tea, thank you." But I want to make clear of some things, we didn't do anything in the Building Department that was malicious, we didn't do anything that was contradictory to any procedure. This gentleman came forward and he filled out a building permit, I've made, I've, I've made these available, he filled out this permit back in the fall, in October, and eventually in, in November, before moratorium was even suggested. And in the application, he says that the tenant space will be a build-out for a hookah lounge, improvements by adding windows. We didn't, we knew at that time that his process was going to take a, a long time. If any of you watched some of the houses that are built in this city, sometimes they take three or four years. So we knew that this process was going to take a while, but we did, we did issue permits right at that point in time, particularly he wanted to install some windows and doors before the winter months. So those permits were granted.
Thank you.
So I just, I just wanted to make it clear that this process was started before moratorium was suggested. If anybody would like to review the permits, the application, the plans, please call me in the Building Department, I'll be more than happy to share those with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I was a good, I was very good at disco dancing, by the way.
Kay, this, oh, go ahead.
I'm on Talib, Sky Lounge, two-three-nine-one-four-zero. I would like to, thanks Rick for the, for the comments he said. I would like to answer a few questions that's regarding permits and plans. We have plans, approve permits, as the Building Department says, so we did the right things of, like, applied for the, for the right permits and everything, and we got approved for everything, and it's supposed to be a hookah lounge. I, I do understand other competitors and where they're coming from regarding, you know, bringing an oldest, biggest lounge to the city of Dearborn Heights. I mean, I do see in what they're kind of scared of, taking a business from them, which is understandable, so I wouldn't be scared of, well, going across if I'm, I'll be a CVS, so that's something that we can understand of. Speaking of Hassan Owen, Hassan Owen lives in Dearborn, not Dearborn Heights, and this is...
I have a business in Dearborn Heights.
Okay, point of order, please.
So, this is regarding just, I don't see any residents that's around that block, actually, that coming forward to see.
All right, point of order, let's just keep it to the speaker, sir, you've got forty, okay, thank you. Any other step up to the microphone, state your name and you have two minutes.
I'm Faye Shammy. I am listening to all of this, I don't know all the ordinance and the laws or anything. I live close to there, and my concern is, when I was given all this information about all the violations and things that, that have already happened, and they're not, they're facts because this is what's going on, my concern is, not just that you're having, you already have, how many in the city? We don't need that many, it's not a good place for our kids, we're not promoting, there's nothing, it's just a hangout, it's not good for our kids. Our kids already have enough garbage to go to, we gotta worry about the drugs, we gotta worry about drinking and all this other stuff. I don't care that I'm a Muslim or I'm not, it's, 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 it's not good for our kids. The smoking, the drinking, I've watched, I've watched other places where they, where they go into, and I don't like, I don't like their looks, I don't like the way they present theirself, and then they could stay up at all hours and violate and, and do whatever they please. I'm not here for, I'm here for us because this is our community, you guys are working for us, you know, they say you're, you're a public servant, you're supposed to be serving us, not, and, and can I accuse anyone of being, doing anything illegal? No, because I don't know enough. I know that we don't need another one, and right now, I'm, I'm really annoyed that everybody seems to think that, not the people, because you see what we have, and if there were more chairs, there'd be more people here. Our kids mean something to us, and I don't want my kids having more garbage around us. We have enough, I already have one behind me, I've got one on the next street, there's enough, we don't need no more.
Thank you. Any further comment? Kay, at this time, let's move forward, we, okay, go to the podium, state your name and you have two minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Alfasi, I live on Melbourne Street. To answer, where is he? Right here, this guy's question or statement, I live close to that area, and I don't want garbage near my house, kids are not. I'm tired of this corruption going on in this city, I don't want any more garbage, we need to clean this place up, and I don't want anything to happen to anybody living in this area. So if the cops can do their job, that's great, but I think it's going to be too much to handle for them. That's enough. There's a gas station right there, so if somebody's gun goes off, the gas station explodes, explodes. You guys think about that?
Thank you.
I pay a lot of money in taxes, living in this city, and I want the best for myself and everybody else here. If this city goes to garbage, I want my money back.
Thank you. Name and two minutes, please.
We Sam, I'm actually a new resident of Dearborn Heights, I just bought a house yesterday, six-six, right, right behind the supposed of Sky Hookah Lounge, six-six-two-two Parkway Circle. I'm actually neighbors to the old Sky Lounge on Oakman, and disaster. I used to work at Hamidah Restaurant ten years ago, liquor bottles in the parking lot, I used to have to clean it up every single night. So I got three daughters, the last thing I want is another party in my backyard, so.
Thank you. Any other comment? Kay, at this point, let's move forward, we have our public hearing and comment, I'm sorry, we just did that, never mind. All right, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Move to approve fund transfers and current claims, item six-one through six-thirty-four as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I have just one question, I believe it's for, if you don't mind, to Mr. Salmy on item six-eleven. They have some trees that were cut down along a back fence at a few places, are those on private property? It says seventy-four-twenty Nightingale, seventy-four-forty Nightingale, and seventy-four-thirty-five Robin Dale. I don't know why we're paying, if, if it is private property, why are we paying?
Yeah, all the trees that Dearborn Tree cuts down are in the city railways.
Okay, so these are city railway trees. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other, Councilman Bazey?
Yeah, again, I'm going to vote no on these invoices, and again, my concern is a lot of these companies that we have here, that we use over and over, never went out for rebid, I don't, I've never seen it, and we know at least a couple of the companies on here, they, they do a bad, poor job, and I know some of the residents have been here to voice their concern about these companies, yet we're still using the same companies over and over, and again, we need to send these companies to rebid, and I have a big problem with our, the mayor's attorney, he's not really, I don't want to call him a corporate counsel because he doesn't represent the city council, at least not the five of us, he's charging the city residents seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars for this veto, and if the mayor wants to veto something, he needs to do it himself, not use the corporate counsel, so I have a problem with that too.
Hey, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, as the maker of the motion, I have a question for Councilman Bazey, are, I would amend the motion to pull out the specific items so we don't penalize everybody that's in the current claim, would you be willing, is that okay? And would you provide that clarification?
Well, he's got a few items in there, it's not just the nine, eight-hundred bucks, there's other items and plus the companies that need to go out for rebid. The, one of the companies that they threw it in front of us a few days in advance, and now they're using them without, there's, I haven't seen a, a rebid for that, so.
So we, I mean, I'm willing to amend and pull those items out.
I'm, I'm good, if you want to amend and pull them out.
Can you name the item numbers, please?
Well, there's the cement company, we need to send that out for bid.
I'm sorry, what was the number?
Cement company, I don't want to name.
Do you have a claim number, please? That way the, the secretary can note those, and then I would amend the motion for that?
First one is six-one.
Six dash one. Six dash two.
Let me see, there's six-two, and also six-dash-four. And, and also the attorney's.
Six-twenty-two is the attorney fee, correct?
Yes, correct.
Six-one and six-four were both bid out.
I haven't seen a contract, I've been asking for it for months.
We can pull those items out and then present that bid to us so we can make sure that's correct, and then it can be added back in?
Yeah, I know.
After the fact, after the vote. So you got six-one, six-two, six-four, six-twenty-two?
Correct.
As for the date of six-twenty-six-nineteen and the amount of seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. I'm sorry, what was that, Madam Chair? The amount is seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, and the date of service is six-twenty-six-nineteen. And that's on six-twenty-two, correct?
Correct.
So you're only amending that to, to remove that seven-ninety-eight fee?
Correct.
And that was for the veto letter, correct?
Correct.
Is that, so I would amend the motion to do that, and then, you know, you're a person who's second, so it has to be, who's the second? Second was Ray.
I'll second it, but are you going to open it up for?
Discussion.
Could you, could you please restate that motion, Forrest, please?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
So the motion is to be amended, we're approving current claim six, it would be three on through thirty-four with the exception to take out one, two, and four, and twenty-two to remove the seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollar fee, that payment will not be made out of that fifteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, that's as submitted.
Seconded by Councilman Muscat.
Yes, that was supported.
Supported. Is there any discussion?
Sure.
Councilman Muscat?
We'll be able to discuss this again, hopefully, to remedy what's going on.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I'm not comfortable with just getting rid of everything here without getting into detail on why we're doing it. So I appreciate it if we can have a, a study session as early as next week to talk about this. People did do their work, so they have to get paid, so let's keep that in mind.
So, Councilwoman Abdullah?
I believe, and administration can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Artistic Lawn, which is number four and five, which I have a question on, either way, I believe that was bided out if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was the winning, that was the winning bid if I'm not mistaken.
No, no, we voted it down at the last meeting because the contract had specifics to tailor it to certain companies that can bid on that, so. Well, that's, that's what it says, I read it.
I have a pointed clarification.
Director Salmy, would you like to comment?
So, so Artistic was contractor that was being used in the eighteen-nineteen budget, so the work that they continued to do was through the eighteen-nineteen budget. These, these invoices was, was work that was done before July first. I had spoken with the mayor and the city, the council president, as recently as yesterday, regarding how we go forward, because the first bid package we did put out, you were correct, it was specific to type of equipment, it was a five-year contract, which was rushed and done in error. I had just come on, I'll take some of that heat, but going forward, my conversation with the mayor and the, and the council chair was that, being in the middle of the grass cutting season, that it would be my recommendation, I have no ties to any of these businesses, that we go forward with Artistic, we do the correct bid for, in the fall, so we're not behind the eight ball. If the council wants to not pay this vendor, he's going to quit cutting the grass, we don't have a vendor in place, and we're in the middle of grass growing, coming up in the fall, which is going to be a challenge.
And I remember at the time, one of the issues was the type of equipment that we had in the contract, that was conditional.
Councilman Bazey's cracked it, had, we, it, and I didn't look at it, and it had listed all this type of equipment, we changed that to say, "Commercial equipment, commercial grade type of equipment."
Right.
And I think it also was a five-year term, and it just got rushed, and meanwhile, the grass is growing, so my thought was, we use a contractor that was being used by the city before I got here. So that's, that's why, that's where we're at right now.
Madam Chair, I mean, I don't mind including Artistic, but we, again, I didn't want to mention the name, but since you guys mentioned it, again, we've been discussing this topic for, since I've been on the council for about a year, or at least almost two years. I mean, we, we can extend it, but it has to be a short extension, because the way the bid was presented to us at the last, the last meeting, that when you guys said, "Okay, this is our choice," other companies was cheaper, actually, the only difference was, it was the tonnage, and I've been doing a lot of research, that's a small fee comparing to the other stuff that they're doing, which is cutting grass, the city grass, or even residents who are not in compliance. So again, I don't have a problem extending it, but there's got to be a timeline when we should, we should actually see new bids excluding special equipment, which actually leads me to believe, as you mentioned, Mr. Salmy, is you're favoring certain companies when you, when you tell them exactly what to, what equipment?
Right.
Which is exactly the same equipment that companies use.
And that's why I make it generic, commercial grade equipment.
Right.
And that was the conversation I did have with the council chair, that...
Do you want me to take care of that?
Again, but we need, we need a timeline as well, we can see that rebid.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, would you please amend that?
What we're going, again, my apologies to the clerk and the secretary, we'll add four back in? Okay, that's Artistic, so again, we're removing six...
Four and five, actually.
Well, we didn't take five out. So we're removing six-one, six-two, six-twenty-two is minus seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, got it? Awesome, thank you.
Do I get a second from?
Oh, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
So I was under, I was told that A-LAN was under contract with the city, that they had a contract in place, so if you do want to pull that, then I'll have to get with the clerk's office to, to find that contract.
Please.
But that, that wasn't, you know, I wasn't here when that was in place, so.
Sure.
But that's what I'm told.
We do.
I'd like to see that contract, and also, what, what are they doing for the concerns of the residents when they complain that they did a poor job? And again, you know, we talked about that the last few meetings.
If a resident has a complaint regarding one of our contractors, please, please get ahold of me and I will definitely address it.
Thank you. Okay, is there any, Councilwoman Abdullah?
I have a question for Director Salmy. I, I did have a concern on this, on these particular bills with six-four and six-five in regards to the sidewalk and weed, and if you look at the combination of the two, and I know some of them, some of the residents are paying, but we got to figure out something, somehow, some way, maybe within our own department, somehow do this, even if we have to add more employees, but you got twenty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-six paid out to sidewalk and weed, and then the next one's six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven for a combination of, give or take, around thirty-six thousand dollars. That's a lot to pay for, for grass cutting during one period.
And, and as we've had this conversation and previous conversations, that first and foremost, we need to get the equipment, which there's some equipment being asked for tonight.
I was starting adding it.
And then, you know, I need to have equipment before I can add bodies.
Right.
So.
But we've got to, when we're paying out that kind of money, it, we've got to figure out something where we're doing it ourselves, instead, instead of, you know, bidding it out.
I, I don't disagree.
Sounds like...
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Councilor Chair, just a clarification, my understanding is that we're going to be talking about this in a study session that's going to end up being brought up in the near future?
In the near future, yes, I don't know what date yet.
Very near future, I hope.
Okay, very good.
Like next week.
We'll talk then.
Kay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is reports from mayor, we have the Crestwood High School Annual Homecoming Parade, which is Friday, October fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move, we grant, as city council, we grant permission to Crestwood High School to hold their annual homecoming parade on Friday, October the fourth, two thousand nineteen, start time is five-thirty PM, and of course, Police Chief Altoni and Fire Chief Brogan have approved the route, and will provide any services they require, as outlined in eight A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, under reports from mayor, we have a veto of motion approving adoption...
Next, under reports from mayor, we have a veto of motion approving adoption of ordinance H dash nineteen dash zero six regarding smoking lounges. Mr. Clerk, can you read our charter, seven dot thirteen, please? In regards to how we handle vetoes?
Section seven thirteen. The mayor shall have the power of veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council, provided that the said veto with the mayor's reasons in writing must be filed with the city clerk at least twenty-four hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council, at which said meeting, the clerk shall present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may, only at said meeting, reconsider the vote at which such proceedings were passed and adopted. And if so elects, may only at said meeting, re-adopt such proceedings by a five-seventh vote of all members elected, in which event, the veto shall be overridden and it will bar the right of the mayor from future vetoes of the proposed legislation. Such proceedings will then become effective on the following day, succeeding such meetings of the council, and ordinances so passed shall become effective immediately thereafter upon publication. No ordinance, resolution, or other proceeding shall be published until the meeting following the meeting, at which said ordinance, resolution, or proceeding was adopted.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, in accordance with Charter seven dash thirteen, we have under reports from city officials, Council Pro Tem Bazey must reintroduce for possible reconsideration of City Council Motion nineteen, nineteen dash two-five-four, Ordinance Number H dash one-nine dash oh-six, Smoking Lounges.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I move the council to reintroduce ordinance H dash nineteen dash zero-six, Hooking Smoking Lounges, for the second reading again, as it was introduced in Motion nineteen dash two-five-four from the last meeting, as outlined currently in nine A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. At this time, we will need to revote on this. We open to discussion? There should not be any discussion because we've already exhausted that two weeks ago, unless there's something that's happened that's recent.
Madam Chair, can I make a couple brief comments?
I just asked. At this point, we're just going to entertain the veto, please?
But it's, it's not fair, residents, I at least would like to give some rationale for my veto, if I might, be very short.
Okay.
We did check with the police chief. There are no problems at any of the existing hookah bars. I am, the biggest concern I had was the fact that both of our city attorneys told us that this ordinance is defective. Even the applicant's attorney is telling us this is defective. It needs to go through the planning commission. And that is an important thing under state law. So I will be recommending to the planning commission that they take this matter up and when they do and pass it, that's when it's going to be an effective ordinance. I'm concerned that this thing isn't worth the paper it's written on because the rules haven't been followed. The other thing is, it's a restraint of trade. Why seven, why not five? Why, why, it allows the existing ones to be instituted in. What that will mean is like we have with liquor licenses, there's only so many. So now you add a premium to that and an owner of an existing hookah lounge now might have a half a million dollar improvement as a result of this ordinance. That was part of my concern. The other thing was Councilman Abdullah came up with, I believe it was nine items. I don't know that I agree with all nine, but there were a lot of suggestions he had to improve the ordinance. And I would like to have seen those incorporated into this and he was denied. So that was the reason to veto the ordinance.
Councilor Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Muscat, we're.
Real quick. I made a commitment to the residents of this city that I will do and be their voice. You all spoke tonight, but beware of what you ask for, okay? I'm going to go with my, with the, with the residents of this city because that's what you all, I've received emails, phone calls, text messages, and people here tonight. But we're not limiting anything because if that's the case, well, why don't we just have some strip clubs down the street too? Okay? And we don't want that, all right? And I, and, and I don't want more bars either, so that's what I have to say and, and I'm standing with the residents of this city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, please keep it brief because we took a lot of time on this a couple weeks ago.
Madam Chair, because you did give the floor to others and I was not here two weeks ago when this was voted on and I should be able to share what I'm going to share with you as your elected official. So thank you for that. I will be brief. Elected officials, I'm going to remind you, we do work for you. I fully acknowledge that. It's clearly stated that we do what's in the best interest of our community. My question is, you know, we are simply to, does it make a decision on ordinance, I'm going to tell you why I support it. I support it because I care about all of you. It's that important. When you say some things without merit, I look at facts, I have facts. I've talked to the state, I've looked at all the issues, I've looked at the commission, planning commission from Dearborn's records and minutes. And we are going to protect you because that's what we're elected to do. So I will stand with your ordinance this evening, sir.
Okay, well, let's, at this point, this is a veto and we're going to move forward with it. Council Pro Tem Bazey did reintroduce it. At this time, we're going to take a vote. We need five out of seven people and we do need, I will poll everybody in the end to make sure the number's correct. Okay, if you vote yes on this, you will override the veto from the mayor. If we have five people, it will be what is considered a super veto. Okay, at this time, all those in favor of ordinance H dash nineteen zero six, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, let's poll. Councilman Muscat, how do you vote tonight?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat is a yes. Councilman Coniston, how do you vote tonight?
No.
Councilman Coniston is a no. Councilman Bazey, how do you vote? Councilman Bazey is a yes. Malanowski Maxwell is a yes. Councilman Abdullah, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Abdullah votes no. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton is yes. And Councilman Wenzel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel is yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a super veto. At this point, it will be effective upon publication, which should, uh, should be published tomorrow and it can never be vetoed again. Okay, at this point, let's move on. Next, under reports from city officials, we have D.P.W. Director Salmy, Building and Maintenance Department Equipment Purchase for one K.C. dash one-three-two series replacement van body.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Salmy. Department is requesting permission to purchase one K.C. dash one-three-two series replacement van body in an amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. And this purchase is being made through the State of Michigan M.I. Deal Program as outlined in Item nine B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
What is this replacing and what is it, or what is it going on and for what department?
Director Salmy, would you like to answer that?
The, it's replacing a, a work box on an F-four-fifty that's in the Building and Maintenance Division. The cabin chassis is in good condition, the box is rotted out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, at this time, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have D.P.W. Director Salmy, Building Maintenance Equipment Purchase for two Hustler Super Z H.D. mowers.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Public Works Director John Salmy and grant permission to purchase two Hustler Super Z H.D. mowers in a total amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fourteen cents. And the pricing is from Sourcewell, which different heights is a member, as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is D.P.W. Director Salmy, Lewis Manor Subdivision Paving Recommendation of Contract Award.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Director of Public Works, John Salmy. The department has received, I'm sorry, has reviewed and concur with Wade Trim's letter dated July first, two thousand and nineteen. The Hutch Paving from Warren, Michigan submitted the lowest responsible bid for the Lewis Manor paving project and we are requesting contract for this project to be awarded to Hutch Paving in an amount of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, as outlined in Item nine D.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Is this the same company that did Lewis Manor before?
I believe so, but I'll defer.
Okay, if it, okay, you believe it is?
Okay, also.
Yes, it's the same, same contract.
I wasn't here when that happened, so.
Okay, also.
This is the same contract.
It is.
My call. Okay, also too, I have a question. There doesn't appear to be a contract connected with this nine D. Director Salmy?
Yeah, this is similar to the one we went through with the Old Orchard Pond. We have to have the council award the bid, then we can give the contractor the award so he can get his insurance and bid documents together. If you'd like, we can bring it back to the council.
I would suggest that we change the wording in here to bring it back to council after the award, I mean, the bid is approved.
It has to.
Yeah, because in here, it says it goes straight to a signature and we, we got a two-step process. We make, need to make sure we do.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah, can you amend that?
I'm willing to amend my motion to include conditional upon final approval by city council of the projected contract.
Okay, suppose.
I'm not supporting the same contractor, no. Somebody else ought to support that.
I'm not supporting it, no.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I do believe, Councilman Muscat, I have the same concerns. We've had the same issues before with paving and I know it took months, I don't know, I don't even know, and it was brought to the city engineer and I don't know if that issue was resolved with the paving, so.
Was that resolved, sir?
They are, they are working on it. They did do some.
A year later. They did do some pavement removal and then they, they are going to be putting the patches in, if not this week, next week.
It's two, two spots that they did unfair with there.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's going to be sufficient. Plus, we still haven't seen any work done, the shabby work done on Haas. Told me it was going to be the springtime. My God, we're getting into August here pretty soon and I haven't seen anything done.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I remember when I was in the Michigan Legislature, we had to have all these hearings because the city of Detroit, they got way behind in their bills. They were, the council, the city of Detroit is known to be somewhat bombastic and I don't want to see the same thing happen here. You know, just go through each bill and pick and say, well, this or that, so we're, we're not going to approve it. We're, we're creating a lot more work for ourselves than I think is necessary.
Personally, I feel that's our fiduciary right to do that.
Yes.
That's why they're individually listed.
Yep. And Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
This is a contract, not a bill either. That's the other thing. You're trying to get in front of it because it's an ongoing problem that has not been resolved in a timely manner. So why would we award more work to somebody who hasn't done it right the first time or fixed it?
The council has an option. There's two other bids in there. The next, the next bid is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars higher. That's the council's choice.
Okay, at this time, I, Councilman.
I'd like to ask Wade Trim or the director, do they think these issues that we had were result in poor craftsmanship on, as a result of the contractor?
Well, where the two patches are, they, the second overlay was, was thin in that area. They have to work on some of the center line separation still. But if you look at the, if you look at the subdivision in a whole, it, it's gone through two winters and it's held up very well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we are voting on the Lewis Manor Subdivision Paving Recommendation of Contract Award. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
No. The ayes have it.
Was it seven people voted no?
Let's take a poll. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Coniston?
No.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
No.
Councilman Wenzel?
No.
Thank you very much.
Seven no's.
Madam Chair, if I might, I'm not recommending, because there, there were concerns about the contract was done, but I feel bad for the residents that are subjected and work that we would like to get done for them. Would you consider the second bidder Cadillac Asphalt?
We'd have to.
Bring it up.
Have to be presented to us.
What about the option of just putting it out for bid again?
These are the only three bidders.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how many companies do this type of work, but I'd imagine there's probably more than three.
There's not a lot and the other problem is there is so much construction work. These companies bid on it saying that they could do it this year. The problem we might run into is sixty days, they may not be, or what they'll do is they'll say, okay, we can do it, but now, like Cadillac might say, rather than one million, one eighty-seven, you give me one million, four hundred thousand. So the prices may go up, or you got them locked into a price right now.
But we could also go back to them and just say the council's okay with the lower, because sometimes when somebody loses a bid, they're more than willing, okay, I mean, I mean, it happens in business all the time. You make a bid on something, you don't get it, somebody else gets it for, I don't know, a hundred dollars less or whatever it happens to be. Usually that second bidder is, a lot of times in business, willing to go back to that lower bid, knowing that that's why they lost out is because of that amount. They may be willing to do it. So sometimes I'm, I'm, I've always wondered in government why we don't honestly negotiate,
I don't know the legalities of that. If we ask for a closed bid, then we open them up, and then we start negotiating with people? I'm not a lawyer. I think that's a problem.
That's fine. Then if you can't do that, then put it out for bid again, and this is public knowledge what the bids were right now.
But the only three companies that bid on it, and you probably won't get anybody to bid on it. Secondly, you will not get it built this year.
But the problem, you know, Mr. Selmy, Director, is the job that this company did, and I seen it personally visually myself, was terrible. And honestly, I'm not a construction guy. I don't know how fixable it is.
Yeah.
I mean, they may be able to patch something here and there, but I don't think it's fixable. Because I deal with concrete all the time in my business, and when something's got a crack, I mean, this thing had a crack from, God, I think a block long.
More than that. If the council's, you know, not satisfied with this bid, you have the ability to award to the next bidder.
Council Chair.
Okay, can you present that at the next meeting, then?
I can. I just, it's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars more, roughly. So just as long as everybody's.
Council Chair, I make a motion that this council approve the bid of Cadillac Asphalt LLC in the amount of one million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars, which is not far off from the lowest bid, okay, of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. So that's my motion.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? Please turn the phone down.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
I just don't know if I'm, I mean, I see that point, but at the same time, it's a much, much bigger difference. I mean, we're talking about almost two hundred thousand dollars. I personally just don't feel comfortable giving it out to the second bidder.
Okay, personally, I have questions too. In regards to these bids, I'm sure that the other two companies were told that they didn't, they weren't awarded the bid. So I think we'd like to make sure.
We didn't tell them anything yet because we're asking for you to approve it first.
That's what my question was, 'cause I was afraid that if we told them the first one won, they might've went on and scheduled other things and can't honor what they originally bid.
That would be tomorrow's phone call to whoever the bid is awarded to by the council.
Okay.
They have to hold their bid price for sixty days.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. That clarifies a lot.
Wait, so it's impossible to go back to the second company and say, I think we could get you the job. I know you said about closed bids, but, I mean, it was rejected.
It shouldn't be closed bids.
It wasn't rejected.
I mean, no, 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 I'm telling you, the nine ninety-nine was not okay, okay? So they're not gonna get it. I just don't see, there's gotta be a legal way, okay? I'm not an attorney, where you contact the guy at one point, one eight seven, and say, million, million fifty, whatever. With the amount of profit they're gonna make, I'm sure any business would do it. I just don't see why sometimes we don't negotiate.
And this type of work, that there is so much of that work, I don't know that they're interested in even doing that. I'm just speaking from personal.
And I respect that, but why don't we try?
But, you know, I can understand too that the company that we did work with in the past that got the lowest bid did the less than standard work anyways, and so I worry if we do go lower that they might not cut the quality of their work too, to meet the price we're requesting.
Madam Chair, put on motions.
Madam Chair, call them out.
We have a motion.
We got a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, well, what sometimes happens with buildings and so forth is, like with value engineering or different things, they can lower, they can do the job for less. That might be discussed, but it's public money, so the bid process has to be respected, I would think.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Abdella is no. The ayes have it.
Just so I'm clear, so the bid is awarded to Cadillac Asphalt.
Correct. Yes, that we made a second motion to give it to Cadillac. Okay, next we have DPW Director. You're popular tonight.
Yeah.
Selmy, Fire Station Headquarters Building Investigation.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I move that we concur with Public Works Director John Selmy, requesting permission to purchase one Bremere BC fifteen-hundred dash fifteen-inch brush chipper in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty. The pricing for this comes from Sourcewell, which Dearborn Heights is a member, and this is, the purchase will be expensed out of the two thousand nineteen dash two thousand twenty Highway Department capital outlay budget as outlined in item nine E.
Support. Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Before we move on, I'm gonna ask everyone again to please check your phones and make sure they are turned off. If you need to keep it on, if you're expecting a call, I would ask that you step into the hallway. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is DPW Director Selmy, Hydro Corp Cross Connect.
F.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of course.
That's the one I just read. Oh.
We did nine E, Warren nine.
Okay, sorry. DPW Director Selmy, Fire Station Headquarters Building Investigation.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Director of Public Works, John Selmy, and approve Wade Trim to investigate Fire Station Headquarters Building Settlement Issues. The cost for services shall not exceed eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars as outlined in nine F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
I, I know the chief is not here, but I think the deputy fire chief is here, if you don't mind. I had a little bit of a challenge with this one, so, 'cause when you go on the second page on the initial letter from Wade Trim, one of the things that I noticed in there is SME, I'm gonna read the last part. SME Consultants to Perform the Required Geotechnical Investigation. SME has some history on the site, which is this building, as they did the initial soil investigation during the design of the building in nineteen ninety-six. So now I have a problem with possible conflict of interest. So the building that initially did, I'm sorry, the company that initially did some of the work, now we're having them investigate, and there could be, I'm not gonna badmouth them, I don't know them, but there could be potential for conflict of interest, because if they come out with a potential problem, then the first question anybody would ask, well, why didn't you, you know, either find it back then, or what was the mistake? It just seems like conflict of interest for them to check their own work.
May I answer that? They did the soil borings, which is the soil information, and that information is given to the architect and designer of the building to use to design the building. So the soil information is just to determine the type of soil, the strength of the soil, so they have that information on file. These do borings, then they can compare the two to see what's changed over time, and then take that information and give it to a designer to come up with a fix. So SME did not do, did not do the structural analysis for the building.
Okay, but there's some, is it potential cracks in the building?
There are.
What's happening, Councilman, real quickly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's like three sections of the building that are separating. So there's like the administrative part in that area, then where the equipment is, and then there's like an auxiliary room to the side. Each of them are separating from each other. One of the concerns I have is a fix could be a half a million dollars. It's, it's, there's, hard to see pictures here, but you will see significant cracking between those three areas, and I remember when I was a little boy, this was all swamp land. I was surprised when the thing got built where it got built. I didn't, in fact, I objected to it when I was sitting in your seat on the council because I felt that there's a reason why the builder didn't put homes up in that area and donated the property to the city, and I think we're finding out why.
But I'm trying to find out, so a soil test, just for clarification, and I'm not a structural engineer or building engineer or any type of contractor, but I'm just trying to understand this. When they do a soil test, that's very similar to when you build a home, you put in, you do the PERC test. Is that correct or incorrect?
Well, it's different. They take borings, it'd be about fifteen feet in depth, and they take samples of the soil every five feet, and they do analysis, the type of soil, the bearing capacity of that soil. So they have that information in file.
Is that similar to a PERC test?
Right. And now they'll do a second set of tests and compare between what was nineteen ninety-six and today.
So this is why I've got a challenge with this. Again, I'm not a, anyway, a construction.
You want to compare the two types of soil.
But I'm just saying, the PERC test, based on my little knowledge of it in general, is how much that soil can carry, how much weight that soil can carry. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, and usually if the soil cannot carry, you'll start to have potential structural issues. So now where I'm going with this is, if they were wrong back then, and that caused the potential cracking or movement or what have you, are they the right people to bring back and say, hey, what do you guys think? I'm just thinking out loud here.
The soils company did not do the design of the building.
It's the architect.
Okay, the architect.
I understand, but the PERC test is how much weight the soil can carry.
Yeah, but the architect made his decision, and we would say possibly at this late a time, he goofed. He made a major difficult problem and put a structure, had us build a structure that can't be supported by the soil.
I don't want any type of conflict of interest.
There's no conflict, because if you, if you someone, okay.
Yeah, we've determined there's no conflict of interest. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Abdella's opposed. The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy, Hydro Corporation Cross Connection Control Service Agreement Extension.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that council concur with Mr. Selmy with the service agreement with Hydro Corp for testing of backflow devices. As outlined in nine G, not many companies do this, and they're gonna keep their costs at the same level, so it is, in my opinion.
Support. Supported by Councilman Bazey. Any discussion?
I only have one thing. I'd like to see in the future if we could possibly get one of our people certified backflow technician and take over this after a while. Because that would, that's, you know, thirty-six thousand dollars a year roughly. We can probably get somebody to do this ourselves. I know.
Okay, also.
In some communities, they use their plumbing inspector.
Correct.
And they have a full-time plumbing inspector.
Correct.
And they use him, and then some of those fees for his salary are paid from the water department to cover those costs, but I think you need to have a full-time.
But that's what I'm, I'd like to see it for your. I'd like to see that for your department, to have someone certified in your department.
I think by the state you can do that, but typically it's better to be done by a licensed plumber.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, also too, I'd like to make a comment on this. There's no contract document that appears to be, needed to be signed, because all they're asking for is they, you want to extend this in agreeance with four point two renewal. So if we pass it, you don't have to sign anything, you can just go forward with it.
Initially, it was awarded as a three-year contract, and then they did a one-year last year, and this, and per their contract, this is the last one-year renewal.
Right, 'cause it said there was a contract to sign, but it's not necessary from what I saw.
Which I do have a copy of that one.
Okay, yes. Okay, is there any further discussion? This is for Hydro Corporation Cross Connection Control Service Agreement Extension. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Selmy. Approval to Dispose of Used Equipment.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Director of Public Works, John Selmy, and approve the disposal of the two, looks like those, what are, backhoes?
Backhoes.
Yeah, they look like backhoes, as outlined in nine H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
What is the plan to do with that equipment? Are we selling them, or are we?
So the other group of equipment that you guys approved in the prior meeting, I'm gonna put everything together, these two, and then you approve some mowers tonight, so I'll probably be back at the next council meeting to get rid of a couple of other mowers. And then there's a auctioneer that works with municipalities. He'll come out, take pictures and everything, he'll put up on his website, and no cost to us, and then we'll get rid of them that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This is for approval to dispose of used equipment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is new business. This is the business license renewals for the Liskawa VFW number seven, five, four, six, located at six, eight, two, eight Waverly and three forty-two Bar and Grill, formerly confetti liquor box, located at three nine, three, two Pelham.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we approve the business license renewals for the Liskawa Post and the former confetti lounge, now known as three, four, two Bar, as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have comments from council members.
Madam Chair.
I ask that we keep them short and be recognized. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have three items, they'll be very brief. One is an announcement for our Congresswoman, Congresswoman Rashida Shalib. She is inviting everyone to the Democracy for All Town Hall meeting. She invites, you know, everyone to attend to find out more about how redistricting and voting right changes will impact you and your community. The date is July twentieth, from ten AM to noon. It's gonna be at Hype Athletics. The address for Hype is two, three, three, zero, two, West Warren Avenue in Dearborn Heights, four, eight, one, two, seven. Special guests include the women, legal women voters, voters not politicians, A. Philip Randolph Institute, and Michigan Secretary of State. For more information, you may call three, one, three, four, six, three, six, two, two, zero. The other two items I have are for follow-up purposes. The first one is I had submitted email correspondence requesting the FEMA mitigation grant quarterly reports and final report. It's been probably about a week and a half, and I have not received a response or the information, and as council members, that information we should have. My other question that goes along with that is with the administration fees, who is the administrator who receives those fees under that? And I would've seen that in the quarterly report if I had received them, but I have not. And then the second thing I have is, it's been over a month since, all due respect to corporate attorney Miyaki, we met, and I handed you the two ledgers for Act three forty-five, the one that I received from our comptroller in December twenty eighteen, and then the one that was a FOIA copy from January twenty nineteen, and they did not match. There were additions of expenses added to the FOIA one, and I have not heard back, and I know you said you needed time, and I respect that, but it has been, you know, over thirty days. So I'm looking to see if we have that available and if we make that available to the council.
Go ahead, Council.
Sure. I met with both Treasurer Riley and Comptroller Vance. They explained the issues and suggested that I contact you to schedule up a meeting to go through these.
Okay.
And that's what we'll.
Sounds like you need to schedule a meeting.
Madam Chair. Can we do that? I mean, I would like the council, I'd be part of that versus just me, of course, even though I'm the person who originally met, but we said I'd like the council to be involved if possible.
We will do whatever the council wants with regard to that. If the council chair wants me to schedule a meeting with yourself first, we'll do that. If council chair could let us know, one way or the other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Laszlo?
In regards to the first comment, who did you submit your FOIA to?
I sent that directly to the mayor, 'cause I understand that everything that I request has to be sent to the mayor's office.
Okay, but then it wasn't a FOIA, 'cause if it was a FOIA, it would've went to me, and I would've gotten that to you. So if you submit it under FOIA, I can get you what you're asking?
I have to FOIA that.
Well, as council, as council members, we don't FOIA anything.
No.
I understand that, but she said it was a FOIA, and I handle FOIAs, and I didn't get that.
I don't believe I said FOIA. It was a request for the quarterly reports and the final report.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because we did not get a FOIA.
'Cause I wouldn't need a FOIA, because it's a financial record that the charter provides for us to.
Yeah, we're, you're entitled to it, we don't have a problem.
Okay, let them get it to you.
All right.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I just want you to, all council people and Mr. Mayor to, I passed out some pictures earlier today of the, there's two main sewer lines that were cleaned by our new sewer cleaning company that came out, I believe, the first of February. The outstanding job that they're doing, they're now giving us the camera videos of the befores and afters, and just to tell you that I've been in contact with them, and they have nothing but good to say about our DPW director, that he's a very pleasure to work with and very cooperative, and so I tip my cap to Mr. Selmy. I just want you to see the pictures here of the proof. And I believe Mr. Selmy will get to with us on something new that they're gonna be trying out here shortly. Thank you, Mr. Selmy.
Councilman Abdella?
I'd just like to add to that, that the director's been very good to work with, and he's done a great job, so I thank him.
And I too, I too have heard good things.
Thank you.
From both the employees and.
All teams, not just me.
Madam Chair.
You make it work.
But you make them work.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Thank you. Briefly, you know, the city council does not decide whether a business opens or doesn't open. The issue before the council is not this particular operator opening or not opening his business. The issue was voting on the moratorium. And the number of the moratorium, we had no discussion. And we had been promised at least a study session. I don't think that, I think there should have been allowed at least some discussion regarding this.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I got a few items. The first one, I still haven't seen the vehicle lists of all city vehicles. All the vehicles are owned by the city. If we can't get it, do we have to do a subpoena to get those records? You know, I'd like to find out, when can we get a list of all city vehicles? Because again, you know, we keep getting invoices for vehicles. I'm not aware of these vehicles. If we keep approving vehicle maintenance, we need to get a list of all the vehicles that are owned by the city.
Comptroller Vance, would you like to comment on that?
Yes. My intern finished that this afternoon, so I was planning on sending it either tomorrow or the beginning of next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Second item, we spent almost a quarter of a million dollars for an $80,000 bathroom. And we still have issues with the lighting. So what's going on with the lighting at Parkland Park? We keep getting concerns from residents that there's illegal activities going back there. They've, you know, called multiple times. Nobody seems to care or answer them. So I'd like to find out what's going on with Parkland Park lighting in the evening.
Would anybody like to comment on that?
I guess from the building maintenance portion of it, I can. I just learned of this on an email that you may be referencing that I've just seen the last couple of days. So I will look into the issues there of what's going on with the lighting, why it gets interrupted. That was the first that was brought to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Abdullah.
Yeah, I also know that, I know that Director Brian Hadad, I'd spoken with him in regards to this. And he's got an appointment with, well, I don't want to name the resident, but one of the resident that did send out the email with the total concern, he's got an appointment with her. I think it's tomorrow afternoon, if I'm not mistaken.
Madam Chair, I have one more.
Councilman Bazey, go ahead.
Obviously, this is public records. It's been all over the news. There's a lawsuit against two people administrators. I'd just like to find out who's going to be paying those attorney fees for the two people who are being sued by the city, since the council did not approve the appointment of the current director. So I want to find out who's going to be paying the attorney fees. I mean, this is public knowledge. It's in the paper. And I just want to find out. I hope it's not the residents who's going to be paying for the attorney fees, since again, you know, the council did not approve the appointment. And again, the council was opposing some of the issues, you know, what's going on at the time. And, you know, we did voice our concern as council. So I'd like to find out again, you know, who's going to be, is the residents responsible for the attorney fees for this upcoming lawsuit that is in the papers?
I haven't been served.
Well, you commented on the Dearborn Press and Guide, Mayor. So obviously, you know about it.
There is no lawsuit.
Who got served?
No one, as far as I'm aware.
No one's been served yet.
Did anybody else have served something behalf of the city?
Covered the defense of all of us.
Well, the city, the council will not approve any attorney fees, because obviously, the council did not approve of the appointment. And also, you know, we witnessed some of the issues that were written in the paper. So I would definitely will not approve any, anything paid.
You don't approve any bills, anyway.
Well, especially the ones that, they're a violation to your duty, Mayor. And anytime I see some things, not for the residents, I will vote no, and especially for that one. When you don't represent the residents or the employees, I will definitely vote against it.
Okay, okay. Let's move on here. Councilman Wenzel.
I have four real quick things to say here. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Frank Zap. He's a neighborhood watch gentleman, sort of self-proclaimed, but he's been working, doing his job on the south end of Dearborn Heights for 10 years, patrolling the streets, checking on abandoned houses, reporting violence or youth out after curfew. Doing a really good job. I just wanted to acknowledge him. And I've had, the next thing, I've had several calls about parking on the streets during trash day, on the side streets. Is that enforceable? I know the main streets, no parking, but people always park on the side streets. Are we enforcing that? I've had four calls today about that. I'm not sure for, does that, does that go to all streets, even side streets on trash day? Yeah?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. All streets. Okay, and I have a quick question for our Treasurer, John Riley. Someone owns a double lot. I had a complaint of a person who owns a double lot, and he's getting two water bills. Is that, is that true?
Well, I mean, if there's two residences, is this two residences?
No, it's just one single residence on a double lot.
Okay, why don't you leave the address and we can look it up? And that way, we can give you, you know. Because it's possible, I mean, you could have a double unit, you know, with a couple apartments. They may have different meters. So it all depends.
All right, thank you. I'll get the address. And lastly, I want to commend Director Salmy for taking care of our veteran memorial wall out there. He's doing a really good job, like we just heard. The brush was cleared away from the wall. And he told me that there'd be future cleanup of the shrubs, trimming the shrubs and other things around there. And I hope that we're going to get a light on the flagpole. Because the flag flies 24 hours, and there's no light on it and the other lights on that wall. And another concern is the memorial, vandalized memorial on the other side of the sidewalk. I was wondering if there's anything being done about that.
It should be completed by the end of July. We're going to receive a bill for $1,700 approximately, but Lee Gavin was in contact with the man, I think it was yesterday. And he's coming here for two other maintenance items, and he will do ours at the same time.
Lee, can you speak on that, please? Is he here still?
Yeah, I spoke with Nick Christensen. He's the owner of Broden Studios in Minnesota. So he gave a price back in January, when Director Zimmer was still here, of $1,673 to replace it. The reason for the delay is he was waiting till he had a few jobs here in Michigan. Otherwise, it would have cost us three times as much if he would have had to drive here. So he's got some jobs at the end of July. And then he's going to install it and then solder it back for no cost, other than the cost of him rebuilding it for $1,673.
It's going to be the exact, pretty much the exact same thing that was there before?
Yes. He made the original one.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
We should have better surveillance cameras around here, too, to stop that.
Okay, any further, okay. At this time, we are going to open it up to public announcements for community events.
Well, this isn't a community event, but I would just like to let the residents of Dearborn Heights know that on June 28th, the Treasurer's Office mailed out the tax bills. They come in the blue envelope with the yellow.
Boy, aren't you the hero.
Oh, boy. You're the special one tonight.
Right. Necessary evil. If you have not received it, please call the Treasurer's Office at 791-3410. You can pay, the tax bills can be paid. There's a return envelope in each envelope that you can mail in a check with the bottom stub. You can come into City Hall Monday through Thursday, between 8:00 and 5:00. We have a night deposit outside of the front doors of City Hall. You can put a check in there, in the envelope with the coupon. You can pay at Dearborn Federal Savings Banks, Dearborn Heights branches. There's one on Warren Avenue and one on Telegraph. Or you can go online and pay online using a credit card or e-check. There is a convenience fee to use a credit card and an e-check. So, and if you have any questions, again, please call the Treasurer's Office, okay?
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be flooded for calls. Where's my, where's my, my bill, right?
I'm sorry. I did skip our clerk, Walt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The absentee ballots were mailed, excuse me. The absentee ballots were mailed out on July the 2nd, one week ago today. There was a delay in the delivery of those. My understanding is there was a power outage at the main post office. We deliver them to Dearborn Bulk Mail. Dearborn delivers them downtown, and then they get distributed out. Downtown had a power outage which delayed the delivery. Many people I know did not get there until Saturday. Anybody here is, that are on our absentee list? Have you all gotten your ballots? Okay. If you have not, I did receive a phone call today from somebody, and I asked them to wait until Thursday. If you applied for an absentee ballot and you do not have it by Thursday, call us immediately. Do not delay. Do not wait. 791-3432. We will be able to issue you a new one. State law requires that you request a replacement ballot by writing, no matter the circumstances, whether it didn't come in the mail. We have those forms available. I'm going to try to put it online, so you could fill it out and email it to us, to make it as simple as possible. The other comment I want to make about the election so far, I have received several phone calls about complaints regarding campaign election laws or election law violations. As we explained to the people who called, the Clerk's Office is neither the enforcer or the investigator on these complaints. There are a couple of different ways of Michigan election law being violated with regards to the complaints that we're getting. And that is either handled through a referral. We cannot refer, but it would be, you would have to make a complaint with the local law enforcement agency. Also, if it's a literature, that's a campaign finance law. Wayne County has forms that you can submit to the state to make those complaints. If it's about signs being put on city property or improperly displayed, that's an ordinance violation and that's through the ordinance office. So I hope that clarifies that the Clerk's Office does not have any enforcement power over any of these laws. Any questions regarding any election issues? Please call my office at 313-791-3432. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we will open it back up for public announcements. No, I said public announcements. I'm going back to public announcements. I said we're going to open it back up for public announcements.
Hello, Council Chair, Mayor. First off, I just want to say, summer reading program is going along pretty good. We had hundreds of kids attend one of our events. Theme is a space theme, so, you know, feel free to come on out. I also wanted to give council an update as to the email I'd sent out regarding DTE's issues in this area and affecting our air conditioning at the library. We had some rather good developments. The MPSC complaint, I believe, and resulted in some action where they upped the voltage, and they made some repairs to the circuit to increase the voltage at our facility to allow the air conditioning. So that's been up for a number of days. So I've been happy about that development. However, there is still an issue where I want to make sure I'm still applying a moderate degree of pressure in that the solution that they had was something that they're kind of patching together to make sure we have electricity in the short term, which is good, because, you know, it requires also an upgrade. So there's an equipment upgrade that's also needed on the circuit. So I want to make sure that I'm keeping pressure on them to continue to do that. But I wanted to give you an update that the air conditioning is currently on. And if any residents are interested that live around this area, around the library, feel free to come in. I have an informal, non-political petition to let DT know that please upgrade the circuit and please upgrade the equipment and make sure service is sufficiently provided to this area. It is not a ballot issue nor a candidate endorsement, so it's just a, just a reflection of service to the library. So that's all. And so thanks for your time and attention, and see you at the library.
Thank you. Any further public announcements?
Hi, my name is Dana. I'm a new director with the Legal Women Voters at Dearborn, Dearborn Heights. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we're going to be hosting a candidate forum for Dearborn Heights City Council members next Thursday, July 18, at the Caroline Kennedy Library. And the address is 24590 George, from 7:00 to 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public announcements?
Hi, Nancy Breyer, Colgate Street. And in addition to that one, we just had our new location, which turned out rather well for those who attended last, the fourth Thursday of the month. And our next one should be of interest to the entire group in Dearborn Heights. We will be having a meet and greet. So not only do you have your Thursday, but the Thursday after. It will be at 3335 Beach Daly, corner of Penn. And it will be a meet and greet with hopefully all nine candidates running for city council. Hope to see you there.
Oh, 7:00 to 9:00.
Masad Khair, hi, everyone. My name is Rochelle Ibrahim. I'm one of the new district interns with Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib. I just wanted to introduce myself. And like the councilwoman mentioned, we do have a Democracy for All Town Hall next Saturday at Hype, from 10:00 to noon. I hope to see you all there. And if you have any questions, I'll just be hanging out in the back. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public announcements?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here on behalf of Senator Betty Jean Alexander. I'm also a district liaison intern. She sends her greetings. There is no legislative updates at this time. As you may know, the state is working on a proposed budget, and it's currently on recess. Attorney General Dana Nessel will be holding a town hall meeting regarding elder abuse, protection of the elderly. And as soon as we get that date, we'll let you know. Also, the Senator wants to be fully engaged in all events. So if you have any events, please give me updates or let me know about any upcoming events. I'll be around here. I'll be back here as well. And if you have any questions or concerns, you can see me or contact the office at 517-373-0994. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public announcements?
Can I also clarify something? I've got a couple announcements from the ordinance department. The original bid that went out for artistic did include specific names, not, not for the intention of it being directed towards any one particular group. I'm going to be honest, I've said this before. A lot of that was copied and pasted from a previous bid. And I even, the day we had our meeting in this room with the folks that did bid, we clarified that for them then. So I wanted to make sure that, again, I want to get rid of all that mojo. I don't like all the direction that alludes to me being involved in things that are not up and up, so. I do want to mention one thing. I talked to the council chair earlier about this today. There were, in the building department, several weeks ago, there was a gentleman that is a contractor that approached us. I did talk to the council chair about this earlier. He had asked that this item be put on the agenda tonight. We had a discussion about it and thought it would be too cumbersome. So it will be on the next agenda packet, but I wanted to give you a heads up on what happened. Please call me if you have any questions. What occurred in 2017 is that this gentleman pulled a permit. He was under contract with a homeowner. He pulled a permit for some, doing some addition work on this property. Very shortly thereafter, he, by, I mean, the contractor and the homeowner decided not to work together anymore. So unfortunately, that didn't get resolved till just shortly, just a couple of months ago. Seems odd that it's two years later, but I will say this much, it involved court between the two of them. A resolution finally occurred in court just a couple of months ago. So he came, which is a normal procedure, to the building department and applied for a reimbursement of his permit fees. The total permit cost was over $10,000. I spoke with Treasurer Riley, there he is. And he felt more comfortable, we felt more comfortable that this come in front of you guys. So all this will be in the next packet. I did tell the gentleman today, though, that I would give you a heads up so that you know it will be coming to you with scheduling for the next agenda. Please call me if you want to come in. I can show you copies of the original permit. I can show you the letter that I sent, the form that we used to submit for reimbursement. It happens on a very regular basis, sometimes almost daily, where people, homeowners decide not to go with a contractor, and they decide to pull out of the contract. Many of you probably are aware of that yourselves, so. So I wanted to let you know that that's going to be coming forward. You're all welcome to come anytime. Just give me a call. You're welcome to come to the building department and ask for any forms. I'm more than glad to show you. I've extended that invitation to some of the council folks here. Some of you, this is a program that we started a couple of months ago in the ordinance department called the Bravo Award. A lot of the ordinance officers were feeling blue, so to speak, not just because they drive blue cars, but they were feeling like they're always the deliverers of bad, bad news. So they came up with a process called the Bravo Award. Because during their travels throughout the day, they see lots of folks who take a lot of time, special attention to their properties, and they wanted to recognize them, so they came up with a Bravo Award. So I just wanted to mention that there were 12 of them issued last week, and this momentum continues to go. MHS is desperately looking for foster people. Please don't use me as an example. I'm called what they call a failed foster. So we took two dogs in, Chuck, who a lot of you have met almost over a year ago. And then recently this year, Mo became another foster dog. The reason they call them failed fosters is because I didn't give them back. I adopted them, so that's what they call a failed foster. But they are really desperately looking for folks that can step up and foster moms with litters, cats especially, that don't do well in shelters. Cats, almost all of them end up with upper respiratory infections if they're in shelters for more than three or four days. So they are desperately looking for, for foster families. You can call our local Westland Shelter, You can call our local Westland Shelter, and we've also got it on our website. It's also in our today, our article. And then the final thing I wanted to say is our low-cost animal vaccination clinic is Sunday, July 21st. There is a change in time originally, we said it was 9:00 to 1:00, but it's now 10:00 to 2:00. They're doing some things now where they're, everything will be live in terms of their data entry that they have to do, and they're having an issue starting at 9:00 in the morning because of this change, so. It's full-service vaccines, rabies vaccines, microchips, and for any of our four-legged residents of Dearborn Heights, licenses will be available that day, so. All right? Thank you so much. Enjoy your evening.
Councilman Vazey?
So we don't bombard you with phone calls regarding that $10,000-something that you mentioned that you're going to put on the council agenda.
Yeah.
For myself, I'd like to see a cancel check, the person that wrote a check, obviously, to the city. If there's a deposit, I'd like to see that, you know, at the package, so if you're going to ask us, I'd like to see that money, when the money got deposited, where it got deposited into a city fund before, I mean, I can approve anything. I'd like to see that money, especially $10,000, that's a lot of money.
Treasurer Riley, are you still here? I think I had asked that same question of you earlier.
Well, I mean, we do have original receipt, we can show the deposit of that day. We often scan the checks that come in. I'm not sure if we have a scanned check of that particular item, but we can look. And the gentleman who was in today, he had his original receipt, which, you know, I saw, so.
His receipt is stamped through the treasurer's office.
So we'll review that.
If you can put in the package.
If not, he may be able to get the cancel check from his bank if we're not able to retrieve.
If you could, please.
Madam Chair, may I add to that? The backup, would you just include it in the packet anyway versus us coming to you and saying, "Show us"?
Yeah.
Just attach it as backup.
100%.
It'd make it easier for you and your time, to respect your time with what you do daily, please.
100%.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is different because it's coming from an Ask Girl account. It's not like it was money that was budgeted, it was a deposited amount for a permit that didn't, and I do, it's several of these a week, I would say, when people decide they're not going to, they're going to go with somebody else, they cancel the permit. Yeah, and the thing that threw us all off is the length of time, and then once we had a conversation with him and he explained that there was litigation, and included in that litigation, and that final order for him is that he's ordered to pay the homeowner back the amount that the homeowner extended to him as well, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further public announcements? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to, oh, public announcement.
Sorry. I'll be quick, I promise.
Okay.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you guys having me. My name is Jake Woods, I'm a project manager at HP Snap. Last week, we completed our final project, the third house, and as part of the CAP program. It's the tax foreclosure rehab program you guys started last year. So we held the open house for specifically the neighbors in the neighborhood, just to see the impact, the positive impact that the program's having. The feedback we got was just outstanding, people thanking us for not renting, the extensive rehab that was put into the house. A few members of council were able to make it out there, and then Lee Gavin from the mayor's office actually came out as well. So I do believe we were successful with our goal. We communicated to the residents nearby that this program is doing more than just letting the properties go to auction. So after getting the feedback we've gotten, if you haven't gotten a chance to see the property, I will send an email out to council, mayor's office, but if you want to see the property in person, which is the only way to do it justice, schedule something with me for the coming week, the property is sold, so it's going to be out of our hands soon, but we'd love to show you guys the work if you haven't been able to make it there. So if the program wasn't implemented, the property would have gone to the county, the county would have auctioned it, anybody from China, California, or even a local landlord can buy it online. They would have bought it, they're not required to put any minimum investment in, so without any or little investment, they're going to stick a tenant in there, rent it for the price that they can get out of it, and the house will never get restored with the way that it should be. So your decision made a huge difference, just in the small number of houses that you guys took last year. This year's list is available from the county, you should have it in the treasurer's office, the mayor's office. I recommend you definitely take a look at it, if you don't have a team to check out the properties. The most important thing that I can say to you is that the city needs to hold these properties. You guys want to disagree about the contractors you want to use, that's all fine and dandy, but buy the properties, decide what you can do with that later. You have a small window of time to acquire them, and the consequences for not taking the properties are far worse than the city holding the properties for a little while. So like I said, if you can get those, sort out the rest in the future, we're happy to help as best we can, and like I said, come check out our work, we do a great job for you guys, not just for the city itself, but for the residents in the city. Ask the neighbors on that block what they thought of the house, and they'll give you an idea. Thank you for your time, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Councilman Muscat.
I saw that house, and that was magnificent. You guys, I saw the before and after, I walked through it, before and after, beautiful home, and it's very well-priced. Obviously, I told the people, this is not going to last more than a week or so, and obviously it didn't, yeah, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further comment, public announcement? Go ahead.
Well, I'm going to piggyback. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Jim Budziak with FPG Invassments. I don't know if you noticed, but earlier today, I emailed the entire council an update on our three homes that were part of the CAP program, and our three homes are also completed. My average renovation was somewhere in the neighborhood of $70,000. I did two properties last year that were actually part of the Wayne County Land Bank program, the Land Bank ran their own program for a couple of years, and I did a couple of properties in Dearborn Heights as part of that program. But to piggyback on what Jake said, now that the Land Bank is not doing a program this year, if the city doesn't act on these properties, they will go to auction and they will become rental properties. I've been doing this in multiple communities for seven years, and 98% of the time, the properties become rentals. That's just what happens. The clock is ticking with the treasurer's office, and I agree with Jake. You can take the properties and kind of figure out what you're going to do with them later, you know, and if you don't want to use us, use different contractors, but I believe it's in the neighborhood's best interest and the city's best interest to take the properties. And just one other thing, the communities that we've been in for years, we're starting to see momentum on appraisal, appraised values, because the appraisers in those communities now go to our properties because they know that our properties will be the highest and best comps. So it not only increases the value of the particular properties that we've done, it starts to increase the value of the entire neighborhood by providing a great comp for that neighborhood, and I'm sure Mr. Abdallah could speak to that, too.
That's correct.
One other thing I'd like to just mention, or well, two things, is this program was dropped on Lee Gavin's lap, kind of midway, and I came in and met with him, and he's been fantastic to work with, and he's, I mean, from my perspective, he's done a great job on keeping the program moving forward. And then, I'm sorry, but I can't see your name. Pardon? Tom, Councilman Tom, I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, at least say, you know, I admire what you've done. I mean, not everybody would do that, and, you know, you're part of the greatest generation, and I want to commend you for, you know, for stopping up and doing that for your grandchildren. Thank you.
Okay, any more public announcements? At this time, I will open it up to public comments, and I did grant you, sir, a few extra minutes.
Evening, my name is Ed Jackson, live over on Ken, excuse me, around the corner, anyway. As a prelude to my prepared remarks, because the last time I was up here, actually the last two times I've been up here, I've just kind of spoken my mind. This time, I took time to actually write a prepared statement. The prelude to my statement, I'd like to mention some names. Edward Abado, Benjamin Clark Jr., John F. Banikowski, Richard Farrell, Freddie P. Bergerson, Charles D. Garrison, Amos Berlin, Maurice Jean, Clarence Berlin, Russell H. Hackett, Charles Bonnefield, Robert Hales, Bruce A. Bowers, William E. Harland, James A. Bub Jr., Gerald L. Harris, Frank Buchanan, Michael P. Gallagher, R.C. Rice, John Bankowski, Gerald Tucker, Jimmy Dale Riles, Kenneth Lee Coswell, V. David DeGrassi Jr., Robert Dowett, Warren M. Kelly, Michael J., or I'm sorry, William J. Murphy, David Ellen Nicole, H., or I'm sorry, Hugh J. Roddy, Donald J. Spataford Jr., Ted Clinton Jr., Stephen Hornack, Dennis Spinelli, Bruce Wilder, Ralph T. Mueller, Robert Harris, Julius Petrowski, Jay Hawk, Peter Illian Chevlin, Norman F. Hornville, Earl D. Sylvester, William A. Kaiser, Harry E. Weiss, Willard J. Landani, Earl Walker, Harry R. McKennie, Harold R., I'm sorry, Harold F. Watts, Peter J. Moore, Lee Winard, Robert J. Natzman, J.C. Dyer, Gene Neiser, Rick Stewart, James Tilly, Bruce Bowers, Robert John DePietro, Glenn Owen Helka, Joshua D. Brown, and Jason Mikowski. I will now read you my prepared statement. I'm returning for the third time to discuss memorials in front of City Hall. They are not being maintained. We are a city of 58,000 people. Anybody going to City Hall has to pass them. I would guess with all the citizen business and folks who work at City Hall, these are seen at least 250,000 times a year. It is an embarrassment to the city. You should not have to take a citizen to come to a council meeting to point this out. There is no reason for the condition they are in. Even the flags are not in good shape. When you go to the city website, there's no mention of having any memorials in the city, at the city hall or anywhere else in the city. As these are honoring special people, you would think the city would want to know that they are here. That was the point of erecting them. We should have something to be proud of. In regards to memorial wall in the area surrounding it, which was dedicated to June 27, 1991, the mayor's last meeting stated the retired general was keeping it up and is no longer doing it. This is a function that should be handled by the DPW, it is on city grounds, therefore it makes it a city responsibility to maintain. I went by the site earlier and found that only some branches have been trimmed. Nothing has been done with the bush to prevent someone walking up to it for viewing. It needs painted, the plaque's cleaned, bushes trimmed properly. In regards to memorial for spec stocks Joshua Brown dedicated June 3, 2007, the mayor said the company, I'm sorry, the mayor said that the city has a contract with the company about repairs. He said there's a contract with Memorial Group, its fallen heroes Memorial Foundation, and they will do the maintenance on it. He said the city is prohibited from any type of maintenance. He's then stated he would call them. I've done some research and been in contact with that organization and was told that is not correct information. They were contacted in October, November of 2018 about the damage. As of Monday, there had been no communication with that organization from the city. There is also no contract for maintenance. At the last meeting, I made a statement about, to the mayor, that maybe bring in some veterans would show concern about the conditions of memorials, and was told, quote, "You can't want them to get done any quicker." He then informed me, "Do what you have to do." I found those comments disrespectful to myself, the memories of the folks on the memorials, the concerns of the citizens and veterans. You are the mayor and should be leading. By the way, I have the same update Mr. Gavin gave you, so far as it's been cast and should be in place by the end of the month. Any updates, I'll be more happy to come to City Council to pass on the correct information.
Thank you.
Council Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
One of the names that the gentleman read was Jim Riles, and Jim Riles was killed in Vietnam. He was, my brother was also a Vietnam veteran, Mike Wenzel. He was my brother's best friend and escorted the body back to the United States, and that wall means a lot to me. My dad was a veteran, my brother was a veteran, I had many family members that are, and it is a shame that's in the condition it's in. It was built and it was just left there to reach, to overgrow it. They're starting to do something now. As it was mentioned, these memorials are for people to come and see, there's no mention of them. I think we should do every effort. I don't know if we should make a motion to allocate some monies to maintain these, or is that something that we should just wait and see what happens?
It's just city property, it should be covered under the general maintenance for city property. It's nothing special, over and above, that it should just be maintained like everything else.
No, I know, I spoke with Director Salmy, and he said that he will entertain the idea of citizens coming to maintain the shrubberies and things like that around there and maybe do some maintenance work. That's, I don't want to be the middle man, I told them to contact him, so maybe that's something we could do. I know, he said that anytime you can get free labor, he's all for it.
Okay, thank you. We all are. Okay, any further public comments, sir? Step up to the microphone, you have three minutes, state your name.
My name is Ed Frolik, I reside on Robin Dale Street, and I take my, I give the gentleman a compliment because my father was a veteran, he received a Purple Heart, and he was an normative patient, okay, so I take my, I commend that person, okay? My thing is with the ordinance officers, there was a guy, I was in church, a guy was protesting that Jesus Christ is not God, okay, not to go to church and all this, okay? And it took 40 minutes for the police department to come over there to break that up, okay? I went to the ordinance officer and asked him this question, and he says, "They had a disservice somewhere else." I says, "Well, couldn't you get some police officers, other officers to correspond?" And he says to me, "We're shorthanded." And he says, "We didn't get no raises or nothing like that, and that, and that's why we're, and some people don't want to do their work." When I heard that comment, that got me upset, okay? And that's not the only ordinance thing. What do you call on Warren Avenue, the businesses, garbage cans are out there, bottles were by the dentist's office, all the way to the top, garbage was, when it was windy, all this garbage is flowing, and I'm picking all this stuff up around my house and everything else. By PLAV was full, by, what do you call it, by State Farm Insurance was full, and I approached the ordinance officer there and then, I'm not going to give the name, but he says to me, "You know what, it's up to you to call GFL." I says, "For me to call GFL?" He says, "Oh, yeah." He says, I said, "No, that ain't my job, that's your job, okay?" And he says, "Well, I'll call them," and I says, "Well, if they don't do," he says, "I can't guarantee they'll be taken care of." I says, "Well, if you don't, if this and that, then you should go to the business and get on these business to get these garbage cans and that." It was done finally after, you know, I made the complaint. What I'm saying is this, right now, a neighbor approached me about hot potholes, I, there's other complaints, there's things that I said that, by Cambridge Dental School, there's two signs that belong to Dearborn Heights. I've been complaining on that for already for five months, still hasn't been picked up. There's what you call light by blimpies around Drexel Street there, okay, and more. They got a yellow thing there and everything. When the heck is that going to be taken care of? The mayor needs to get his act together because next council meeting, I'm going to address Malatki and Bob Constance and David Abella, and I'm going to get, because you people work hand in hand. If this, one lawyer works with the other lawyer, and if one lawyer should jump, the other lawyer jumps.
Thank you, your three minutes is up. Okay, is there any more public comment at this time? Please come to the microphone, you have three minutes.
Good evening again, Zuhair Abdul Ha, Dearborn Heights. I was looking at the website for the backup of your agenda. It was your agenda, maybe lots of people at home don't know. Every department give you invoices, give you papers to support the item they bring for you to vote on, and they used to be on the city website. They disappeared miraculously. We can't go back to 2009 to find anything all of a sudden. I did call the clerk, and I asked him, "Did you remove this information from the website, Mr. Clerk?"
I believe what you, we talked, and I believe what you were referring to is on the old website, there was a documents online section, and you could go back and get old stuff that was posted. I believe that's what you were referring to. I do not see that feature under the new website, I don't know if it was transferred. I have no control over that, and I can't give you any more.
Who has control over this information, and who is capable in our city to remove things from the city website? Since this information has lifetime unlimited, it's a city council document, it doesn't have a status of limitation or anything, they must be there for the life of the city. So did you order anybody to remove it, or it was somebody else?
I did not, I do not have, the pages that the city clerk's office has control over is the city clerk's page, the city council page, and the city legal postings page. Those are the pages that we control, those are the pages that I alter, some on a weekly basis, some when necessary. Other pages I do not have control over.
Do you know who has the access to remove this information?
The other pages are controlled by the administration.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, question to you. Do you have any idea?
Who has an answer?
You're talking about the archives. If the clerk and the city council choose to put all that information back up, it has to be reloaded. They can reload it if they want to. It's not taken away, it's still public, it has nothing to do with what has to be published online. You're talking about archives.
Yes.
And those archives are still available if you want them. If the city clerk and the city council want to put them all back on the new website, they would have to physically load them back on the new website.
Those basically are freed, you don't, they don't cost you anything.
No, they, they're.
You can put them, I'm asking you, and I'm asking the city council, we're doing some research on some things happening in the city since 2009, and all of a sudden, you know, I can't find the information. I would like you... I would like you, the council, to direct the administration and the clerk to put this information back online. Otherwise, I'm going to bring you a FOIA request and ask to inspect every page from 2009 until today.
Well, I think you have every page, because you FOIA'd that a couple months ago.
No, no, you gave me the minutes, and I thank you, it was, yes.
That bit, yeah.
Yes, thank you, it was beautiful, and believe me, I went through every line.
I have some more for you tonight, too.
I, I thank you. I love the information you give me, but I find lots of good things in it. So, I would like to see this information back online, if possible, because I...
Council will direct whoever necessary to get it back online.
Administration, and there must be, for transparency reasons, we need that there. There must be limit to who has the access to remove information or to put it someplace or wherever. It could be on the cloud, it doesn't cost the city anything, and if they want, I can...
I don't think you understand, I don't mean to interrupt, but it was, it was information from an old website, it was an archive, it wasn't a, like, the minutes are all there, all the pertinent information is there, this isn't something that's required.
I'm looking for the backups of the agenda.
And I don't know if that's required to stay, because that's not in the archives that you have.
I think we would require the city council to keep that on there for transparency reasons, especially if it was on there the first time.
It was a requirement by the...
But do you even have that?
Who did remove it?
Well, we shouldn't have to find out, we should just request it to be on there.
Ms. Laslow, I believe what Mr. Abdul-Hawke is talking about, do you remember under the old?
It's the archive, yeah.
It was called Documents Online.
The archives.
I don't have control of that, I never did, it was just, it was archived, whatever I put up was in that particular...
The archive, and I didn't have control of it either.
So, I didn't...
Who does?
Yes.
Take it down, it did not get transferred with...
The new website.
Correct.
New website.
Because it was archived.
Madam Chair.
Counselman Abella.
I just think, I mean, and I agree with the resident, even if it's not on the website, I think residents should have easy access to any type of information, no matter how far back, not having a FOIA.
I agree, the minutes are there, but I don't know if the clerk has a hard copy of that, because that's not, like, if he had a hard copy, we could get an intern or something to scan it and put it back on.
Well, if it was archived, it should still be here.
Well, between the old system and new system, they transferred a lot of information from the old system to the new system, they obviously missed this portion, so whoever did that, can they transfer this, too?
I mean, I don't want to argue this, I can explain in an email that went through exactly why certain things were put on.
Can I ask why you are in charge of it, not the clerk?
I'm not in charge of it.
Then, why you tell them?
Okay, point of order, point of order, all right, point of order at this point, let's just, we'll work on resolving this.
I just want it to be back online, so I can see it, you know, like I used to, thank you.
All right, I will address it, and we'll work on getting it back on for everybody. Any further public comments?
Tom Wenzel, 4218 Tulane. I'd like to ask the administration or the DPW, what the heck's going on with all that tree trimming going on in the south end? The Davies Tree Company doing massive tree trimming, the debris they're leaving behind, the very, in my opinion, very, very poor craftsmanship of the branches that they leave.
At any time, you're welcome to call me, we can discuss that. They are contracted for DTE, and they are clearing DTE's power lines.
Okay, well, I was asked to ask this question, I know.
And you're welcome to call me anytime, you know, when my office is all there.
Nothing to do with the city, it's contracted to DTE.
And they have to right away to go on.
All right, thank you.
That's not right.
You do.
Okay, any more public comment? Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, my name is Hassan Basie.
Okay, point of order, guys, please. Please.
Actually, I have two questions. I will go with the first one if the time allows, I'll ask the second one. A while back, we asked about the head of the department, for the building department, why up till now, this position is not filled yet, even though other departments, they were filled right away here, I mean, recreation department, emergency manager, and others. Why this department up till now hasn't been filled? I mean, with all the respect to the people working in this department for the good job they're doing, but why until now, few months, this department is still vacant? And this question been asked before, I know there's people qualified for this position, and they, I think they submit their applications, so is there an answer to that?
Unfortunately, city council doesn't hire people.
We don't hire our own departments, so we have nothing to do with that, unfortunately.
Okay, so who hire, I mean, who has to...
That would be the administration.
Departments are by the mayor, for department heads.
Or HR.
HR would be...
Is there anybody in this department in this city can answer this question? Anybody from the audience, I mean, you guys, can anybody answer this question?
Okay, and what is your second question?
I mean, this question was asked before, I'm, so, thanks for the answer anyways.
Does administration have an answer in regards, or can they help this gentleman after today?
I don't have an answer right now. I gave an answer before, it's the same answer.
Well, I ask you, Mr. Mayor, directly right now, is the, are you the person who is in charge of this hiring?
Correct.
Okay, why this position has not been filled yet?
Because I can't find somebody at $55,000.
There is somebody with 55, is qualified, I think his resume is in this city, so...
News to me, I've had a couple resumes, the people have to be certified by the state of Michigan. One of the person was an engineer, but he was not certified, you have to spend a couple years in the department. We have excellent people in the department that I would look at first to assign them to it rather than an outsider.
And why?
Because they won't take it for 55,000. They're making more money now.
Okay, the second question is, I know we bought the city bought clean sweeper for the streets, I'm just wondering, is there like a time for each area, each street? Because I haven't seen any for a while in my neighborhood serious, I miss those, because, I mean, I don't want to take pictures for them, but do they go like in particular areas or, I mean, I don't see them, I really, even on the garbage day, I look outside, I know we just bought two new ones, too.
Yes, sir, we bought two new ones, we have a total of five. We sweep the streets on garbage days. I don't know if you're home all day while we go through there, if you have a particular complaint and want to provide your address, we'll look at that, and I will definitely come and address that.
I just don't complain, it's a concern, you know, I like, I like to see them, I mean, I know we bought two new...
I don't know what time you're home, I don't, you know, we don't schedule certain times, we go down certain streets, so...
Is garbage day, he said that?
Well, thank you for the, thank you for the city council people for looking after the citizens serious, I mean, you see a lot of people here, I mean, they have a trust in you, hopefully, we can go, keep going this way, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for, no answers, too.
Okay, any other public announcements? At this time, do I hear a motion to end our meeting?
Motion adjourn.
Okay.
Support by Mr. Constable.
Motion to adjourn by Counselman Muscat, supported by Counselman Constance, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting's adjourned.